Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening and welcome to Monday, March 18th, Board of Aldermen Meeting. The first order of business will be swearing in the newly-elected Alderman. If everyone would please gather over towards that side so Peg TV can get your picture, and the mayor will swear you each in, and then there's this thing for each of you to sign.
I've done that before. Flip over.
(Inaudible) That works for you?
Alright, awesome. Please raise your right hand. Eyes, state your name.
I am Michael Talbot.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office of Board of Aldermen
That I will faithfully execute the office of Board of Aldermen
For the City of Rutland
For the City of Rutland
And will therein do equal right
And will therein do equal right
And justice to all persons
And justice to all persons
In the best of my judgment and abilities
In the best of my judgment and abilities
According to the law
According to the law
I also solemnly swear and affirm
I also solemnly swear and affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the State of Vermont
That I will support the Constitution of the State of Vermont And I will have it safe.
Congratulations.
(Applause)
Thank you.
(Inaudible)
And I don't know who wants to go first, but there's only two seats, so, alright.
(Inaudible)
Seat four.
Seat one.
Alright.
Alright, next order of business, I will entertain a nomination for Board President. Alderman Barbogallo.
It is my honor to again nominate for the second time, Michael Talbot for Board President. Michael is extremely knowledgeable of how the city works, is fair with all Aldermen and citizens of Rutland, and runs an efficient meeting. I take great pleasure in putting his name forward for this position.
Do I have a second? Alderman Heck.
I would also like to nominate Alderman Davis. Alderman Davis was a top board getter in this year's elections by a substantial amount. She's been here 34 years, and she has shown her dedication to the City of Rutland over those years. She's been within the chair, I think it's at least nine years, if not 10 years, as far as that goes, and also ran a very efficient meeting, and I think would do her due diligence to continue to support what is best for the community.
Do I have a second?
So, if I may, just a point. So, I appreciate very much the nomination. I appreciate your kind words. I appreciate the respect shown also Alderman Gillen for seconding it, but I respectfully withdraw my name. I feel strongly that I'm comfortable with Alderman Talbot as Chair, and I feel that my place is on the floor to encourage debate, to ask needed and necessary questions. So, with all due respect, Alderman Heck, I appreciate the nomination, but I choose to decline.
Alderman Wickham.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor is the nomination for President, for Michael Talbot to be President of the Board of Aldermen. Do I have any?
Do we have to close the nom-
Oh, sorry.
Vote to close.
A vote to close the nominations.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, a motion to approve the nomination of Michael Talbot for President of the Board of Aldermen.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Come on up, Michael Talbot, you are the President again.
(Applause)
First order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is public comment, where members of the public are invited to address the Board on matters not on our agenda. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address the Board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor. Mayor Dungus, welcome.
Good evening, and welcome and congratulations to our new Board of Aldermen members and our returning Board of Aldermen members, which I think all of you are returning Board of Aldermen members from one session or another, so congratulations. First off, I have placed on your desk the nomination for a Planning Commissioner by the name of Aaron Hildebrand, and I would ask the Board to table the nomination as is custom until the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to table the nomination of Aaron Hildebrand for Planning Commission. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Fantastic. By the way, his resume is included in your packet, so if you want to give a call, reach out, the information is there. Also, just a quick introduction, I have asked our new HR Director, Ellen Coyle, to stay for a few minutes extra tonight, just so we could introduce you. So Ellen, if you wouldn't mind standing up and waving to everybody and just saying hello. So thank you very much for taking on the challenge, and Ellen has been here a little over a month now, actually, five weeks, six weeks?
Seven.
Seven weeks, geez, time's flying, and you're doing a fantastic job, so thank you for being here, and you can go whenever you're ready now. Okay, so I want to recap a few things. The election, the clerk is going to give a report later to this evening, but I just wanted to say thank you to Tracy and all of the employees in the clerk's office, as well as our election clerks and everybody that worked the election. We really appreciate the effort, and it was nice to see that move as smoothly as it did, even with some of the technical challenges that we had, so thank you very much for that. There was a Dismas House legislative breakfast recently. We had several members of the Board of Aldermen there, as well as several members from our Rutland delegation to Montpelier. It was nice to sit and learn about what recovery means, what facing challenges mean to these people who are in these homes. Both the men and women were there, even though the breakfast was in the women's, in the men's home this year, and it was, Dismas House is doing good work in Rutland when that type of work really needs to be done, so we appreciated that presentation. Also attended the Stafford Regional Advisory Board, so that we did our quarterly meeting and got an update. I do want to talk about Stafford again. Every time I get the opportunity, I do. Stafford is working to train our young people in careers that are needed here in our community, and they do a phenomenal job of it, so much so that almost every single one of their programs is either fully enrolled or over-enrolled. They have waitlists of 20-plus students for some programs, and it is phenomenal to hear that this, you know, that our technical school in Rutland has been doing so well and has such a great reputation, and it has a great reputation amongst the state. So I just want to put that out there, that if you have any time to stop by, visit Stafford, get a tour, understand those programs, and take a look at what they are doing for our community as they go into their next years of funding and work for the students, I'd really encourage you to do that. Today, we had our Department Head meeting, and we started a new series where we're going around to Rutland-area businesses, facilities, and we started at Wonderfeet today. So every month, we're going to stop by and we're going to visit somebody for our Department Head meeting. We got a 20-minute presentation from Danielle, talked about what is happening at Wonderfeet, the impact that Wonderfeet's having on the city, and the impact that we've had on Wonderfeet with the things that we've done from them, everything from supporting their move and encouraging them through the finances that we gave from ARPA, and how that has done so well. Danielle did take the time to talk about how on certain weekends, they are so popular that they have to actually turn people away. I know she was here a couple of weeks ago for our Board of Aldermen meeting, and it was a great follow-up to have the Department Heads go and hear about what's going on at Wonderfeet, and then we took our meeting and took the rest of the 40 minutes and had our normal meeting that we would have here, but we're getting out in the community to do that. So the next time we go out and do that, I'll give you an update on where we went, but I just want to thank Wonderfeet for hosting us today. So what we're doing right now, unless you have been living under a Rutland rock, you know that in the past four days, we have been dealing with the transition from the hotel program into a temporary sheltering program. Started off with a lot of angst, might not be the right word, but a lot of trepidation around what was going to happen and how people were going to move, and what we found in the end, at least over the last three days, is that the load on that shelter was quite light. Couple of reasons for that, so we only saw two to three people a night staying, depending on the night. We have yet to see what will happen this evening, but a couple of reasons for that, as we understand it, are the, those who own the hotels have allowed people to stay over without a voucher for some, and there are also, has also been some work from advocates to sign those able-bodied, under 65, no kid individuals that were supposed to leave and go to the shelters, up for disability waivers, which would allow them to stay in the program until the disability portion of the general assistance program runs out. The reason I say we don't know what will happen tonight is Vermont state workers were back in, on staff today, and if they didn't get the disability waivers processed, there may be some additional people looking at those shelters this evening. On that note, I'll be going to Montpelier on tomorrow, oh no, today's Monday, so on Wednesday and Thursday to speak both to our Rutland delegation and to the governor about what's happening and about how this is impacting our community. One of the challenges that we're seeing, and this is something that is now becoming more and more evident every day, is that although we have a very, very large population of the unhoused in Vermont that have been located here in Rutland, for one reason or another, the supports to either transition that population or support that population in transitioning out of the hotels haven't been coming this way at the rate in which we need. And what we're hearing is, is that the general assistance program, the benefit, it will end, and at the very latest, it sounds like it will end in June. And there, the Budget Adjustment Act that was passed doesn't include funds for supports and supporting our city and supporting our resources down here as much as they did before. There used to be $4 million in the Budget Adjustment Act for these types of things. That's been reduced to $1.4 million, and that will likely not all come to Rutland, even though, actually, we're likely to see very little of that based on what I understand right now. So I'll be going up to Montpelier to talk about the challenge, about the impact on our city resources, on the impact on our community, and how we really need to focus on what's next, and taking that challenge on and figuring out how to do something, because as we've looked at for the past year and a half, there hasn't been, hasn't been a lot of action to support Rutland in this need. So we're going to be having that conversation. We've continued to have that conversation, but it looks like we might need to push a little bit harder, because the state isn't putting the supports in place to help us through this challenge at the moment. But I'll give you an update on that as soon as I can, as we go through that process. In the meantime, I do want to say thank you to the Police Department, the Fire Department, our Building and Zoning Department, the National Guard, those workers at the state that work for these agencies, that are not responsible for the decisions but are responsible for taking care of people, have all stepped up to really support in this situation as best they could. And again, that load has been light so far, but it won't be forever, so I just wanted to say thank you now for what they've done so far. Progress on housing development, you know, over the past few weeks, I've had meetings with several developers, from talking about multi-unit, you know, 20-unit buildings to 100-unit buildings to one or two units upgraded here. We've had conversations with our local credit union and the state treasurer about how we're going to continue to fund these things, and, you know, 10% for Vermont, and Vermont, is that an option as well. The housing discussions in the past two weeks have just been off the charts, and it's good to see that while we have a demand on one side, we have an interest on the other. And with that, I think we need to start thinking about how we can incentivize housing development in Rutland. So I would like to ask the Board to refer the discussion of the water and wastewater reduction incentive to the Finance Committee.
So moved. Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to refer discussion of the water and wastewater rate reduction incentive to Finance. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Alderman McCann. Could you just describe a little bit more about what you're intending to do with that?
Absolutely. So right now, today, to entice businesses, we have this reduction incentive plan, which allows you to, you know, reduce the rates, get a discount in certain areas. It's not available for those building residential, and if you look at residential rental, usually the landlord takes on that bill of water and wastewater. So I'd like to see if it's something that the city would be willing to adapt that incentive to housing developers as well, to try to find a way to entice them for a short period of time to reduce those water and wastewater rates, so that they would develop here and build some housing, so.
Any additional discussion on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Fantastic. One more page, and they're sticking together. Sorry, I already talked about going to Montpelier this week, but one of the other things I'll be doing while I'm up there is discussing Act 250, or House Bill 687 for the new legislation that's underway, just having conversations around what needs to be done so that Rutland City can benefit from these policies that are being put in place. For those of you who are following it, we're currently looking at a tiered system. The tier that Rutland would fit best into is Tier 1A. That would allow our Building and Zoning Departments to basically set the permitting process, and unless there's something that the state needs to do, we wouldn't need to have a second parallel permitting process through Act 250 for larger developments. So we'll be having that discussion as well. Monday's with Mike, we will be doing our next one on March 25th at Luce Luna at noon, and I've got one more topic that I want to bring up for the Board. We've talked about this for, I think, 35 years plus. We have documents coming all the way back. We have done studies and surveys and underground studies, and all sorts of different research into what we need to do with Center Street. And we are at a point where we have so much data put together and we're ready to go. So with that, I would like to make a motion, or I'd like the Board to make a motion, to refer the topic of the Center Street Design Project to the Community and Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
Alright, so we have a motion to refer the Center Street Design Project to Community and Economic Development. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Alderman Gillen?
Can I ask a question of the mayor before he leaves?
Absolutely.
I was a little disturbed with the emails coming from the State House on our situation over the weekend. I would really like you to discuss with them, careful what they say, because they set a firestorm in place that didn't need to be there. A lot of people got upset, the downtown people are calling me all weekend long, they're still calling me today, and we only had one or two people in there, so it's just, the whole rumor mill just went crazy this weekend. Because of some memo.
I think, I think there's two sides to that, and I'll absolutely have that discussion. One is the information and the rate in which it came, right? It came very last minute, it was very abrupt, there wasn't a lot of detail, and we, you know, the information got out in certain ways from the state that would have probably been better if it had a little structure to it. I think the second piece is that had the advocates not stepped up and had the hotel owners not set aside free space, we would have seen the influx that was predicted. So things happened after those announcements that kind of dulled the cut, so to speak, but in reality, I think the swift nature in which the reaction happened, when this, you know, National Guard stepped up, delivered cots and the support, I think all those things were necessary, because we didn't know where we were going to land, but it was disconcerting, honestly, to have that information come at such a swift rate with very little communication up until the last minute. So I agree, Alderman Gillen, and I'd be happy to have that discussion.
Because we didn't have the tools in our hand to even discuss with the constituents what's really happening.
Yes.
Because it was so fast. So I think they need to give us a little heads up, a little advance warning.
And I'll give some serious applause to our Rutland delegation, especially a few members of them who stepped up, immediately made some phone calls to my office while I was dealing with it. It was nice. We have great representation in Montpelier, and I think that, you know, sometimes, because we are a small community and we don't have as much representation, we aren't heard as loudly, but I do, I do think that we've done a good job communicating the needs of our city, and we're going to continue to try to be loud, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gillen.
Alderman Davis?
So my question is a little bit different.
Sure.
So we had talked a couple of weeks ago about how dark the city is, and you were going to meet Green Mountain Power, and I was just wondering, was there any conversation about trialing, turning up some of these lights?
Yeah, so I've been playing phone tag, but I did end up with, I called one person, I got redirected to their boss, I've got their note card on my desk, I left them a message on Friday, and I'm just waiting to hear back, but I will absolutely follow up with you on that. Thank you, Alderman Davis.
Any additional questions for the mayor? Alderman McCann. Yeah, just a comment, I want to thank sort of the leadership and action that came out of City Hall and the different programs around the city. You know, it was a last-minute thing, and it didn't seem like folks here rolled over and just let the state do whatever they wanted to do. I think there was action taken to try to find alternatives, to try to find solutions that would work for everybody, and then when the state, from what I've read in the newspaper and heard elsewhere, it seemed like the state sort of flexed its muscles, said, "Well, we can do this, whether you want us to or not." I think our zoning office took a step and said, "Okay, that's fine, but we have some tools as well, and if you want to use that site, there's some steps you need to take, like anybody else using a property in the city would need to do." So I just appreciate the discussions, the leadership, the attempt to find alternatives, but then also making sure that the state plays by the same rules everybody else has to play by.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda, do we have any additions or deletions? Seeing none? Alderman McCann? Would it be possible, I think we have both a special event permit and a BYAP application tonight, I don't know if it would be possible to move those up? As soon as- We can certainly move the special event permit up. Let's see here. We can move petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications to the top of our agenda. The BYAP comes up pretty quickly in the next section. Great. So someone would need to make a motion. I would make that motion.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to move petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications to the top of our agenda. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, we will move to petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. We have a special event permit, request for the Rave Car Show to be held on July 13th and 14th. There is a copy of the permit application on pages 85 and 86 of your packet. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the event?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Alright, motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of the Rave Car Show to be held July 13th from 9:00 to 5:00. I believe it's at the Fairgrounds.
Yep.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the special event permit for Rave Car Show on July 13th and 14th. It has been seconded. Alderman Heck.
Just wanted to remind the Board that the show's been going on for probably nearly 30 years. Nate has been great about getting the application in and stuff. This is held on private property. Even though he continues to give us a special events permit, it's not necessary for you to do so. I'm glad that the city acknowledges the fact that this application has come in, but according to the ordinances and stuff, it's not necessary. It's been kind of a ceremonial-type thing. Usually have a motion to receive and file as far as that goes, however you folks want to take it up, that's fine. I just wanted to point that out for you.
Very good. So we have a motion to approve on the floor. It has been seconded. Seeing no additional discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to reports and letters from Department Heads and officials. First up, we have Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a request that we sign a resolution of support for the city's application for a Vermont Community Development Program Implementation Grant on behalf of Housing Trust of Rutland County. There's a memo and supporting documents on pages 17 to 19 of your packet. Barbara, welcome.
Thank you. As stated in the memo that you received, this is part of the package for VCDP for applying, and so we are asking that you circulate the resolution for signature this evening. The application is due April 9.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to circulate for resolution the VCDP grant application for East Creek Commons.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to circulate the resolution for signatures. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Alright, and we have another request to sign a resolution of support for the city's application for a VCDP planning grant on behalf of the Housing Trust to assist with their merger with Neighborworks of Western Vermont.
Yep, so again, like I wrote in your memo, this is part of the VCDP application, and it's required, and I think it's interesting to note that whether you apply for $1 million or $60,000, you still have to follow all of these thresholds and meet all of these thresholds, so I would ask that you circulate the resolution for signature.
So moved.
We have a motion to suspend the rules first.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Alright, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So moved. I move the motion to approve for circulation and signature, the VCDP grant application for Housing Trust of Rutland County, Neighborworks of Western Vermont merger.
Alright, so we have a motion to circulate for signatures, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The RRA again with a request to open an environmental review in the Grants Electronic Application and Reporting System for 133 Forest Street on behalf of the Housing Trust of Rutland County.
Thank you. So typically, we open an environmental review when we open an application. This application isn't going in until the fall, and those applications aren't even available yet online. However, you can apply or start working on the environmental review in anticipation of an application. So because this is a little bit different, I just wanted to get permission from the city to go ahead and open that environmental review, so that Mary Cohen could go ahead and get started on the environmental review.
Alderman Taddeel.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I will move to grant the RRA permission to open an environmental review for 133 Forest Street on behalf of the Housing Trust of Rutland County.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion to authorize the RRA to open the environmental review. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And the RRA once more with a recommendation to approve a Business Incentive Assistance Program loan to Kaleidoscope LLC. There's a memo and a copy of the loan application on pages 24 to 31 of your packet.
Thank you. So Raven Crispino is applying for a $10,000 BYAP forgivable loan to open an art and paper store, Kaleidoscope, in downtown Rutland at 37 Center Street on the second floor. Raven is making the required $10,000 financial investment, and together with the BYOP and a DRP grant, she'll be using those funds to purchase fixtures, furniture, and a picture hanging system. In addition to other items, she'll need to open the store. She has been working with Nancy Shuttleworth at the Small Business Administration and provided a business plan to supplement her BYAP application. Raven is here this evening, and she would like to talk to you a little bit more about her plans.
Hi, thank you so much. Okay, so I invested $10,000 into creating a space for all ages and all skill levels artists and creatives to enjoy in Rutland County and Vermont. I've lived here for three years, and I believe that this will be an asset to our community, because it's not something we have right now in a downtown location. A new business with creative opportunities and options will draw people into the city. I believe collaboration, not competition. I believe collaboration, not competition. And, you know, in addition to selling art supplies and, and paper supplies, I'll be having workshops that I've already had meetings with artists who would be interested in running the workshops, and I already have something on the calendar planned, as well as a rotating gallery space, so I can showcase under-recognized artists as well as artists that are known in the community. Thank you.
Any questions? Alderman Wickham?
Thank you, President Talbot. Just a couple of questions if I could. I reviewed the application, job creation. Is it one job, and would it be you?
So, I'm going to be creating a job for myself as the business owner, and I'll be running the retail side of the store. And then I'll be hiring independent artists to host the workshops. You know, they'll be, it's, it will be a commission-based percent, you know, scale of how I would pay them. And then, you know, I would love to eventually hire someone, you know, part-time or full-time down the line, for sure.
Okay, hold on. Market analysis, so intriguing idea. Is there a comparable anywhere locally?
The nearest independent art supply store, I would say, is in Middlebury, Vermont, which is about 40 miles away. Or if you want to go to Bennington, there's also one there, but we do not have one in Rutland.
Final question if I could. And I apologize, I had asked for the financials department to get them to me. I just got them late, so I couldn't review. But I was, I was curious, what's your monthly operating expense estimate?
Like, including rent and everything?
Yeah.
I would probably say, so rent, utilities, internet, cost of my POS system, I'm going to say roughly probably around $700 a month.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Alderman McCann?
A comment, this seems pretty exciting. It's, it's awesome that you're kind of taking the plunge and bringing something that seems completely new relative to the current landscape of downtown, and I wish you all the luck with it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderman Tadio?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'm excited to see your store, and I would like to make a motion to approve the $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to Kaleidoscope LLC.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan for Kaleidoscope. It has been seconded. Alderman Wickham?
Thank you, President Talbot. I, I just want to say, I really appreciate this proposal. I absolutely want to be, see it be successful. I, I do have genuine concern about the runway that this business is going to have. Most businesses significantly struggle out of the gate. They're going to operate in the red for a while, and a $22,000 investment, half of which going to inventory with incurring expenses, I, I just worry that the money that we're putting up, we, we might lose that. So I'm going to vote against this application.
Any additional discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Assistant Engineer Gillen with a request to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement with the State of Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. There's a memo and a copy of the grant agreement on pages 32 to 63 of your packet.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So I'm here to request authorization from the board for the mayor to sign this municipal separate storm sewer system grant agreement, State of Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. Basically, the State of Vermont DEC, through an individual permit, they regulate permitted stormwater discharges to state highways. As part of this permit, we're supposed to develop a phosphorus control plan. We completed that in 2022. That plan outlines several potential projects that can lead us to our phosphorus reduction Our goal being to reduce phosphorus loading into Otter Creek by 8.7 kilograms per year, that's about 19 pounds. The fact of the matter is, we applied for a grant, received it for the amount of $488,533. It has a local match of $122,138.25. That local match can be met through in-kind efforts, through DPW personnel. So we've looked over this plan. We have a couple of projects that are really cost-effective, one of which we would intend to perform in-house. That estimated cost came in, came in around $100,000. So we're looking for a very limited amount out of pocket.
All right.
Any questions?
Alderman Gillen?
I move to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to authorize for the mayor to sign the MS4 grant agreement with the State of Vermont Environmental Conservation Department, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Administrator Strinasty with a request to approve an amended development plan for 18 Gay Street, which was previously sold as part of the city-owned property program. There's a memo and a copy of the development plan on pages 64 to 66 of your packet.
Good evening, everyone. So last October, the Board of Aldermen approved the sale to Mike Weatherby, who, if you recall, John Janowski was here on his behalf and largely coordinating the redevelopment of 18 Gay Street. So over the last few months, John has been working rigorously at 18 Gay Street. It's actually, the unit itself is almost ready to rent, hopefully getting the certificate of occupancy next week or the week after. But in the meantime, the garage itself has collapsed due to some weather issues, and there's, it's going to take a little bit longer to complete the development plan, which was aimed to be completed around April 1st. So, or, yeah, April 1st. So in the packet, I originally, I think, requested for June when talking to John. I've since had a discussion with him. He was wondering if he could extend it to through October, given some other projects that he's also working on. So that is the request. John is here if you have any questions, and I'll take any questions as well.
Alderman McCann?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I would make a motion to approve the amended development plan for 18 Gay Street as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Was the request as presented or through October?
Through October. A little bit of a mod.
I'll amend that, so through October.
Does the second or?
Second or third.
All right, second or third? Alderman Davis?
So just a question, just because we ran into a little hitch for the last one. Have you seen the progress?
I have not seen the progress myself, but since this is, you know, a relatively new one coordinated through the city-owned properties just last year, and John can attest to the work that he's been doing thus far, and I believe have scheduled a certificate of occupancy visit, or?
Oh, the comp has been marked.
Yeah, so.
But the associate will be.
Okay, not scheduled, but we will see, we do end up seeing the progress when we have to sign off on it, on the certificate of completion for the project, so.
So just a general question, just because of the concerns that we had with the last property, or at least concerns that I had with the last property. At what point do we get involved to see that progress is being made? I understand the garage and having to back things up, that's not a concern, but at what point do you or does the city go see whether this is following the progress that we should be following?
Yep, so that is something I think we need to look at. We're going to be coming up with the policy, and, you know, now that I have the Assistant Zoning Administrator here, it allows me to give some attention to the city-owned properties program as a whole. So, well, when these properties do get sold, I'll be able to keep a better progress report on them. I'm a little bit less concerned, given John's reputation in this case, and it's been fairly recent, but I, I do appreciate the, the point, and I think, you know, hopefully, once some of the other issues I've been dealing with die down a little bit, I'll be able to focus on the city-owned properties program.
Thank you.
Alderman McCann?
Yeah, I just want to thank Alderman Davis for bringing that up. Because I have the same concerns. We don't want to let these get to where the last one was. This one does seem to be in a, a different condition. You know, we are looking for years or a huge change, it's just a, a couple of months, it sounds like. But I, I agree that we need to make sure we don't fall into that pit and then end up with our back against the wall trying to make a last-minute improvement to it.
And to John's credit, you know, he is going about it the right way, too, and recognizing that he won't hit the deadline for the redevelopment, or for the development plan. So did come in and request an extension, so.
Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion to approve the amended development plan for 18 Gay Street through October. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Treasurer Markowski with the treasurer's report for the period ending February 29th. This was emailed to board members.
I emailed the packet, I think, on Friday. So this is for February, so I don't like to get into too many details when we're on the month end because we'll be looking at the third quarter, which will be more meaningful end of March. So if you had any specific questions when you were looking, anything there, and then I'll just go over some highlights of things that have been happening in the treasurer's office. Whenever you're looking at February, end of February, cash balances are high because we've just been through our collection period and we haven't paid the school. The school portion is about three and a half million that we transfer over quarterly after, 21 days after collection it's due. So you typically see that, cash balances. Looking at the delinquent reports, property taxes, 838,000 in delinquent. We're moving that down. We've had some tax sale activity, so that's reflected there. And on water and sewer, over 90-day balances, 271,000. When I looked at last year, remember, we were just talking about doing shut-offs, we were in the 400s there. So we've been able to keep payment agreements and monitoring those, so I think that's a really good trend. So I wanted to speak to that. So in February, we held, we had one day, we held three tax sales. One was, one we had a bidder for, so that one on Central Avenue. The city placed the bid on property on West Street, so that will likely, if it doesn't get redeemed, we'll have it through city-owned property here at some point. And then we had another on Hopkins Street that we had people here ready to bid on it, but we had an issue with the water, so we had to hold on that one. So we may see that one again. Just pointing that out, and we have, if you've seen in the paper and posted downstairs, we have a couple scheduled for April. But having said that, you'll see just three, but we target a whole bunch of these, and we are able to collect some of these before we even get them to, you know, scheduling the tax sale. That's really what we want, so I wanted to point that out. When you're looking at balance sheets and fund balances, you'll notice, I give you a summary every time of all of the funds. I highlighted on there, because you see, I opened up a new fund for the grant match, so you'll be able to look at that one and see, that was 400, that was funded $400,000, and then you can see I've started to, in that fund, target which one, how many grants we, I think there's $79,000 assigned for, for grants, so I'll point that out. And then there is another fund for the rental revolving loan fund, so you can see that fund. You see the fund activity quarterly, but monthly you can see the detail, but at least just the summary. But at least to point out, so you can see as we're dispersing funds, I think we have one loan that we actually sent the disbursement last, last Friday. And then another new fund was the local option tax. So that's where you'll look to see that local option tax revenue and anything that we've spent there, so just wanted to point that out. One highlight that I have is non-tax revenue. We always budget non-tax revenue. That's such an important number that, because that directly offsets how much we need to raise in property tax. So as of the end of the period, we're like 87% of budget, we have strong non-tax revenues when you look at the revenue sources. So that's a good sign headed into third quarter. Water sewer funds, I still worry about those funds when I see them. Those revenues just aren't coming in and covering the expenses that projected for those funds. Those are problems. Those are running at a deficit, and I know we have proposed increases, but it's going to take, rate increases, it's going to take a little while to, for those to bounce back. So maybe wastewater allocation, we should talk about, like, can we, how much can we do for folks on that? So RRA, we have strong cash balances. In the RRA account, expenses are right on target, and revenue sources, they come in sporadically throughout the year. Any questions on the city financials? Then other notes that I had, tax sales scheduled in April, so there's three that you'll see posted. We're starting already to talk with DPW and schedule water and sewer shut-offs again. So if anyone is worried about their water account, call my office. Let's get you on a payment agreement. We'd prefer to do that than go the shut-off route, but we likely won't do as many as we did last year. Sweet of that. I received the draft audit reports last week, so that's what I've been working on. It's quite a job to go through all of those pages and write the management discussion, but I am working on that, and as soon as that's finalized, I'll get that out to everyone for the city and the RRA. Also working on updating financial policies. So that's, Barbara's working on a grant, some of our financial policies, although we have them in, in the ordinance and we have them, they need to be updated. So that's really important once I get through the audit to do that. So I would ask with that, if we could refer financial policies to finance so that, just so that as they're ready, we don't have to, we can hold a meeting and review those policies.
All right, so we have a motion to refer updated financial policies to the Finance Committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the referral? Alderman Wickham?
Just a quick question, quick question. Do you have any specific policies that you want to look at right out of the gate?
Yes, and we're already reviewing in Board of Finance. So the purchasing procurement policy, that's the biggest one. We need to tighten that up, follow it, and that's the biggest one of concern. So we've already had that in Board of Finance, working on that one, and then there are others that we need to just, almost just review and up, just update, is this still adequate for us? So, yep. Thanks.
Good. Any additional discussion or debate? All those in favor of the referral?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
President Talbot?
Yes?
Just a quick question, Treasurer Markowski, if I can. Back in the day, there was some federal money, or I don't know if it was ARP money, that people could utilize for water bills. I know back when I was here, there were several people that were able to utilize those funds and stuff. Has that gone away, or is that still available for folks having problems with their water bills?
It's closing very soon, so we still have a few working through that program, but I, I think by the end of the month, you won't see that available. But it's something that we are always in contact with the state, trying to find the best avenue for people that are struggling, if we can, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have City Clerk Kapusta with an election recap from Town Meeting Day.
Okay. Good evening. First, I would like to thank my immediate team, Susan Clark, Sarah Magro, and Julie Chaproti for all their hard work, dedication, and the long hours that they put in. And a thank you to the DPW for hauling, setting up, and removing all the equipment for wards. That is such a huge help. I also would like to thank the elected ward officials and the ward workers for their time and dedication on such an important day. Most of their days started at 6:30 a.m. and ended around 8:30. For the presidential primary, there were a total of 3,225 votes cast. Of those total votes cast, 1,357 were Democratic and 1,868 were Republican. 28.5% of registered voters in Rutland City voted in the presidential primary. For the local election, there was a total of 3,442 votes cast, which represented 30% of registered voters in the Rutland City, in Rutland City for the local election. There were some issues relating to the tabulators. The tabulators that the city uses for all elections were purchased by the Secretary of State's Office and were implemented for the August 9, 2022 election. The machines had been serviced by LHS Associates prior to the March 5 election. LHS Associates is an election services company that the state of Vermont contracts with for maintaining the tabulators. The tabulators were tested prior to the March 5 election, and everything appeared to be working correctly. However, the first issue with the tabulator started early on, and it was a printer sensor error that started at the Goddardic Center. And then it started to occur at all other wards. And the only way that you could clear that error out was by the ward clerk and the master keys. This error continued throughout the day and was reported by several other towns throughout the state. The next issue we encountered related to write-ins. If you had a write-in name and you failed to stay within the lines, the ballot would reject for an ambiguous mark. We were informed prior to the election that LHS had corrected this, and it shouldn't be a problem. And we even attempted, we even tested it during testing, and we didn't have any issues with any of the write-ins that we put through. What the issue was, is that both candidates running for the two-year school board seat, both had a lowercase "y" in their names. Sometimes the tabulators read that ballot, and sometimes the ballot would reject for an ambiguous mark because the lowercase "y" fell below the line. So the voter either had to complete a new ballot, or if they're in a hurry, the ballot was placed in the auxiliary compartment in the tabulator box. And then later, two election officials took that rejected ballot, labeled it spoiled, and copied it over everything to a new ballot, and then it was fed in the tabulator. All spoiled ballots are accounted for and are placed in an envelope and then placed in the sealed ballot bag at the end of the night per state statute rules. This, again, was a problem that occurred throughout the state. Another issue was, two of the tabulators, one at Christ the King and the Goddardic Adult Center began to lose power, which resulted in both of those wards getting emergency replacement tabulators by the LHS service technicians. Come to find out, this was not unique to Rutland. There were many towns and cities that had the same problem. Lastly, the tabulators were slow, which resulted in long lines at times. And again, this was another theme throughout the state. I've reached out to the Secretary of State's Office and LHS Associates, asking for explanations on these issues. I have not yet received any correspondence, but I will certainly bring it back to the board once I do. An issue relating to the checklist in Ward 1 was brought to my attention. One side of Kendall Avenue was moved to Ward 4, Calvary Bible Church. Unsure why this had happened, I quickly fixed the error, and anyone who came in to vote at Ward 1, who lived on Kendall Avenue, and their name was not on the checklist, their name was written at the bottom of the interest checklist so that they could vote in the appropriate ward. I couldn't understand how this happened, so I reached out to the Secretary of State's Office. As all election materials relating to voters are generated through the Vermont Election Management System, which is a system owned by the state, I was able to pull previous March 2023 checklist, and I could show that all of those who lived on Kendall Avenue were in the correct ward for that election. Why it changed for 2024, I could not be given a reason other than new programmers for the system took over in November of 2023, and perhaps something happened then. Regardless, my office has gone in and checked every street in Rutland City to ensure that each is labeled for the correct ward, and I'm happy to report that all the streets were correct. There were some grumblings from voters who may not have voted since the reapportionment that the state did in the summer of 2022. And the first election after this change was held August 9 of 2022. The state did not send out notifications to voters, alerting them to a change in their polling location. And the city administration at that time did not elect to send out notifications either. Communications were done by articles in the Rutland Herald, information on the city's website, and it was brought up at various Board of Aldermen meetings. For the upcoming August 13 election, we will have maps for each ward to better explain to the voters the changes that were made, and they will also be able to see if their voting location has changed as well. Of course, if anyone has questions about their voting location, please call or stop into the clerk's office. This was my first election as a city clerk for Rutland City, and all in all, it went well. These issues that we experienced were not unique to Rutland City, but statewide, and were out of our control. As a reminder, the next election will be the state primary on August 13, 2024. The general election will take place on November 5, 2024. All voters will be mailed a ballot for the general election in November. This was something that was enacted in 2020 during COVID, was written into law in 2021. So for every general election, which occurs every even year, ballots will be mailed to all voters by the state of Vermont. Lastly, I would like to announce that Barbara Spalding and Gary Spalding have been elected as the new ward officials for the Goddardic Adult Center, and Cynthia Sinos and Rebecca Bogus have been elected as new ward officials for Christ the King, and they will join Beth Kirin and Thomas Carpenter. All other ward officials will remain the same. Thank you.
Thanks.
Finally, we have Attorney Lechance with a request to approve the emergency mutual aid agreement for the public works departments of the member municipalities of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Yes. So you should all see in your packet, the emergency mutual aid agreement. There are some appointments that will be, need to be made at a later date. Tonight, I am just seeking the board's approval and permission to grant the board president to sign off on the mutual aid agreement as included in the packet.
So moved.
So we're going to can?
Sigh.
All right. So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded.
So moved. I move Attorney Lechance's motion.
And a motion to approve the emergency mutual aid agreement and authorize the board president to sign. That's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have reports of standing committees. We have Alderman Gillum with his report from the Public Works Committee meeting of March. This was placed on your desk.
Thank you very much. The committee met on March 11. Alderman Payne, Barbara Gallo, Holy, and Gillum of the committee were present. Also present was President Talbot, Alderwoman Davis, Tadio McClure, and the city mayor, city treasurer, and the city assistant city engineer Gillum, and Commissioner Bob. Also, what's not in here, Gordon was also there, also. Sorry. I forgot to put you in there. My apologies. The meeting started at 5:30 in the committee, in the conference room. The two issues were the water main bond issue and the lack of funding or options, and the septic and the sludge fees from the wastewater treatment department. The first issue was the septic sludge fees for the wastewater treatment department. The Public Works Commissioner briefed the committee on the rising cost of transportation of sludge and septic removal from the treatment process. The CASLA contract has seen an increase of 8% from last year, and will, and expecting a increase next year due to lack of landfills in Vermont. By the way, we only have one. And then out-of-state landfills, which is further away from the plant, which increases the cost of transportation. The department treats in 2023 the sludge of 3.3 million gallons and septic 5.2 million gallons. And there was a chart enclosed, but guess what? Bill did not enclose the chart. So I will send that off to the city clerk. There, there's the proof that I have a chart. Oh, it was in there. Oh, good. I can see the color. Okay. And it shows you in the chart where all the fees are, and how, and as the, as Mary was speaking, how the water fund and others are hurting a little bit. This is why we are putting this motion forward, to make up some of that loss that we're going to have in that fund that we need to make up. And we're going to have to do it right away, so we don't go in a deficit situation. So Alderman, Barbara Gallo moved the motion that the committee recommends to the full board for approval that the city of Rutland Wastewater Treatment Department is authorized to raise the sludge fee to 1.5 cents per gallon, which brings the new fee to 12 cents per gallon, effective date May 1, 2024, except the town of Brandon will be effective date July 1, 2024. And I so moved.
Second.
The vote was 4-0-1. The reason why, just so everybody knows, the reason why we did Brandon, Brandon's budget got voted down, and so they need to go back and do it again. And obviously, they won't be online until July. So that's why we're giving them a little break until July 1. So that's why that's happening.
Very good. We have a motion to authorize the raising of the sludge fee by 1.5 cents per gallon. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate?
And I have the assistant engineer here, if there's any questions, not to put them on the wall.
Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. The second motion made by Barbara Gallo, the committee recommends to the full Board of Aldermen for approval that the city of Rutland Wastewater Treatment Department is authorized to raise the septic fees 1.5 cents per gallon, which brings the new fee to 11 cents per gallon, effective date May 1, 2024, except, again, for the town of Brandon, effective date will be July 1, 2024. The motion passed 4-0, and I so moved.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to authorize the raising of the septic fee 1.5 cents per gallon, which brings the new fee to 0.11. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the second issue. And this is a pretty, pretty interesting issue, and it probably is going to take a little debate to get through this, but you need to understand what's happening. This, the second issue is the mains, the water main bond issue and the lack of funding and options. Assistant city engineer Gillum, Gillen, briefed the committee on the water bond of 2.5 million passed last year at the town meeting in March 2023. Unfortunately, the voters approve, what they approve will not cover the projects slated to improve the old water lines, which is a century old, to improve them to larger lines for more water pressure and fire protection hydrants. And there is a, in the packet, there was some numbers and projects suggested, and things like that are in there for your, for your pleasure. So also, the city needs to prepare for the $10 million Vtrans, which I forgot they are in there, repaving project for Route 4 and 7. Business 4, which is West Street, Cottage Street, State Street, Columbia Avenue, and then to the border on West Street again. And those bids came in to take care of those projects at 3.5. So obviously, we don't have enough money. We haven't got enough approval because we aren't approved for 2.5. So therefore, the department is recommending a $3 million funding for the priority list that they brought in, which is over the cap of 2.5 million bond. After a long discussion with, with the public work and the mayor and, and the committee, the Board of Aldermen recommends the following. Alderman can moves to authorize the Public Works Department an additional funding of $300,000 from the Harper Fund, which right now in the, in the account right now is 438,000. And I so move.
Second.
Actually, it's all one motion. Wait a minute.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
No, it's all one motion. Sorry. I got to add this to the motion. Plus $100,000 from the Water Capital Fund, and the request was $200,000 for the 1% tax for the infrastructure fund. We actually had not go to the 1% tax, so we are just doing the 100, 300,000 and the $100,000 extra on top of the 2.5. And I so move.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to authorize the additional funding of 300,000 from ARPA and 100,000 from the Water Capital Fund, and that's been seconded. Discussion or debate?
Yes.
Alderman McCann.
I just want to commend the folks at DPW for working on this, trying to really get a handle on the scale of the problem in terms of the inflation costs and trying to do right by the folks in the city. The, the issues that we're trying to address here in terms of water supply, both for drinking water, but also for fire protection, are pretty wild. So the, the age of the pipes, the insufficient size of the pipes, I think they said there's, there's some streets that have something like an inch and a half supply line. Or, you know, it's basically like what's coming into my house is supplying multiple houses and that. We've got to get that rectified just for, for safety and for quality of life. So I appreciate you guys not willing to back down and cut things off and leave people stranded out there.
Alderman Gillum.
So there was, they've set a couple of priority lists up. Obviously, we can't do all the projects like we would like to. We have, we have equipment out there, 28% of it still in the last century for 18-something, that still needs to get fixed, so we need to keep moving on it. But the other issue was, and I think people need to understand at home why we're sort of in a emergency mode because, starting in May, or sometime in May or first part of June, the state of Vermont Vtrans is coming in and do the complete repaving of Route 4 and 7, plus Business 4. But we have to do some underground work first before they can come in, because it'd be crazy to pave the road, and then we go back and dig it up again, because we got to put the water lines in. So they had come up with a plan to do Chaplain Avenue, Morse Place, Madison Street, Curtis Avenue, Water Street, and some, a few other streets. They have to get the plumbing under the ground, back into the main road, so we don't have to go back there and dig it up again and do it all over again. So they have done a very good job of putting this priority list together. Unfortunately, it's coming in much higher. All the bids were coming higher because of, obviously, inflation, cost of goods, labor's all gone up. So all the bids are coming in much higher. So we've been forced to kind of pull our wings in a little bit and do some stuff on our own. He's got some money in here for our own agencies to do Water Street, Nickel Street, Whale Street, and Terrell Street. And those are the streets that connect into those, that paving project. So that's why we're doing all this now. We need to do this, so we don't have to go back and dig the road up again. Because I know that really makes taxpayers very upset. After we do a major paving job, we go back and put a hole in it because we had to put a water line in. So this is a, what we call a preempt, and trying to get this work done before the state starts their project.
Additional discussion or debate on the motion? So Alderman Heck?
Yeah, and I apologize. I'm new here, but when you look at a, a 2.5 million dollar bond that was approved, and it's kind of gone to 3.5, that's a 40% increase. And it just, not that it doesn't make sense, but I, I understand there's additional work. I respect the guys at DPW, you know, as, as far as that goes. It's just finding the resources, you know, in regards. The voters here have always been very good about approving projects, you know, and I don't know how they're going to feel or, you know, how this works. If they're going to approve a 2.5 million dollar thinking they're going to get X, and they find out it's Y, and it's gone up 40%, it's not going to sit all that well as far as that goes. You know, again, you folks have been working on this. I'm fairly new to the understanding of how this specific project works, and that it just seems like it's an awful lot to take care of those things. A 40% increase across the board on 2.5 million dollars is not chump change as far as that goes. So at this point in time, if I vote no, it's got nothing to do with the project itself. It's just got to do with the fact that I don't feel I have enough resources or information to make a, a good decision for my constituents out there, and I want to do the best job that I can. So.
Very good. Alderman Gillum.
And I do, I do know that you're concerned, and I understand that. But the agency, when we came back with the bids, it was 3.533. So the department came back with another plan to the committee, and that's why we, we put it in the committee very quickly, because obviously, we're in the bidding process for all the paving and everything, plus our paving. So it was very important that we get a plan together and not hit the taxpayers again. And, and with this extra money that we're putting in, it's coming from Harper Funds, okay? And the other $100,000 has come from the water, water main fund. And so we've already put that money aside. It's not like new money we found. It was already there, and they're staying at $3 million. So they have done the compromise and brought it down where it's manageable. Meanwhile, we're taking care of the issues that need to take care of before we do the paving. So they did a nice job bringing that to us and, and cutting it down. Doesn't mean we're done yet. Next year, we're going to have to come back to the trough again. I'm just warning people, because these water lines are important. Water is very important to taxpayers. So we really need to maintain these water lines and get the pressure up. For example, there is one area on Water Street that goes to Cleveland Avenue. It stops halfway down, so the pressure is way low. That is not good for fire protection. It's not really good. They really need to go all the way around and connect to Cleveland Avenue. And the state and the federal government wants us to make sure we loop all our water lines, so the pressure does stay. Also cleans the water lines at the same time. So it's very important that, and Chaplain Avenue's another one. You got a hydrant way up on the end of the street, not enough pressure. If those two major businesses have just moved in there, don't have enough water, that means the fire department's got to in there, don't have enough water, that means the fire department's gotta go all the way to Main Street, bring those water lines in, and bring the water to put a fire out. So everything here on the list are high priority on their list. It has to get done and get the pressure up, also to take care of the new construction project. So I understand your, your feeling here, but I just want to make sure that, that department came back and actually lowered it even more than what they were asking before.
Just to recap, we have a motion to authorize additional funding of 300,000 from ARPA and 100,000 from the Water Capital Fund to cover this Water Main project shortfall. Any additional discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
So also, the, the priority list is gonna remain in committee. I also want to make sure the taxpayers know, a part of their proposal was to put the 1% sales tax, which we can do for infrastructure improvements. We, the committee decided to just table that for now, because we really need to find out where we're at. I, you know, Mary came in, excuse me, Treasurer Mary came in and gave us a report on it. And I, I agree with, we need to leave that alone, let it build up, and then we'll go back to it maybe, you know, next year. But we decided as a committee to table that part of the 1% to add to that program. And the committee adjourned at 6:39.
Very good. Sam P. Alderman Gillum. Next, we have Alderwoman Toddio with her report from the Community and Economic Development Committee Meeting of March 14th.
The topics were the East Creek Commons and HTRC/NWWVT merger, Vermont Community Development Program grant applications. Committee members present were myself, Alderwoman McClure, Alderman McCann, Alderwoman Davis. Others present were Mayor Dungus, Alderman Barbara Gallo, Alderman Gillum, Treasurer Mary Markowski, Chair Talb, President Talbot, and Barbara Spalding, Ed Bove, Mary Cohen, Dan Caputo, and Gordon Drichillo. The meeting was called to order at 5:30. The purpose of the meeting was to receive a presentation from the Housing Trust of Rutland County on two ongoing projects. Mary Cohen, the Executive Director of the Housing Trust of Rutland County, gave the committee an update on the East Creek Commons project. Originally, there were 22 units total, but with the addition of Mandala House and a property in Castleton that will be used to house homeless veterans, there will now be 35 units total. The project has been through two rounds of positive grant funding. This update is for information purposes only. The second update from Mary Cohen was about the pending merger between the Housing Trust of Rutland County and Neighbor Works of Western Vermont. Both of these organizations do not have overlapping services, but have synergies when they work together. The Housing Trust is able to do real estate development projects. Neighbor Works of Western Vermont is able to assist people experiencing homelessness. The goal is to merge the two together to create better overlap of services and increase access to national funding. Neighbor Works of America will support charter organizations with grants if they have real estate development projects. Neighbor Works of Western Vermont is a chartered member, but doesn't have a real estate side. So if this merger occurs, then Rutland County would be able to take advantage of external funding sources. There are five Neighbor Works organizations in Vermont, and four of these do have real estate development options, so they can take advantage of funding from Neighbor Works of America. With this new merger, the goal is to help people go from homeless to homeowner. This update was for information only. The meeting adjourned at 4:47 PM.
Thank you very much. Reports of representatives, we have none. Reports of select committees, we have Alderman Barbara Gallo with a report from the Parking Committee Meeting of March 7th. Copy of the report can be found on pages 82 to 84 of your packet.
The Parking Committee met on March 7th at 5:30, and the attendants were myself, committee members Alderman McCann, Alderman McClure, Police Chief Gil Cullen, DPW Commissioner Provansky. Also in attendance were Mayor Dungus, President Talbot, Alderman Davis, Alderman Gillum, City Attorney Le chance, City Treasurer Markowski, Officer Lozario, various city employees, and members of the public. Members of the public were first asked if they wish to comment on anything. Merchants from downtown area expressed concerns about the increase in the street parking prices. They said many of their customers were complaining to them also. The owners said because of the complaints, it makes downtown an unpleasant place to work. Complaints varied from the cost to park, unable to use Park Mobile app for less than one hour, and one complaint about being double charged on a Park Mobile app. They tried to contact Park Mobile app and were unable to get the charges reversed. We told them to bring the complaint to the treasurer's office, and they would take care of the problem. To this date, to date, this is the only known case of this. We felt that as with anything, a new learning process will happen, and it will not occur very often, if at all, in the future. Currently, street parking is now at $1.50 per hour. Using Park Mobile app, you must get at least one hour to use the system. This cost is 1.50 per hour plus a 45 cent processing fee charged by the app. People were asked to be able to set less time using the app, as some people do not need an hour. We explained these charges were only for street parking in the downtown area. Outer areas are cheaper, but require a short walk to get to the downtown area. From early studies, it is noted, noted that the mobile app usage is going up and the meter usage is going down. We also told the public that parking in the deck is only $3 per day, that's a 24-hour day, with the first 30 minutes free. Safety concerns were expressed by the public about parking in the deck. Police Chief Gil Cullen stated that we now have an officer stationed downtown all day. This had stopped for a while when there was a shortage of officers, but now it has restarted. The officer, when notified, can be at the problem site quickly. From the deck, you can access Merchants Row through the Bloomer Building, Center Street through the passage across from the Paramount, and West Street simply by walking out the front of the deck. There are also long-term parking lots downtown available for rent on a monthly basis. The rate is about $35 per month. This does not guarantee where you will park in the lot, as there are no assigned spots. At the last meeting of the Parking Committee, fines were raised to $30 for the first violation. These new rates have not gone into effect yet. Fines are still $15. We found out that in order to raise these rates, we must refer this to Charter and Ordinance Committee. A motion was made and passed to refer these to Charter and Ordinance, the Charter and Ordinance Committee for review, and I so move.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to refer the parking fine rates to Charter and Ordinance. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Seeing none?
Sorry, just wanted to add there, as we're reviewing all of the rates, I think the overall rate changes across the board need to be reviewed by Charter and Ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. Let me clarify. The overall parking rates across the board referred to Charter and Ordinance, it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the referral? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I forgot to put it in the report, but all of these motions were unanimously approved by the committee. Public Works Commissioner Provansky has reported that 205 new meters have been installed downtown and are working well. This should eliminate many of the problems customers are have, have had parking. He also stated 53 meters have been retrofitted and are also in service. The kiosks are still a problem. New internal workings for these units are on back order, but should be arriving in about three weeks. As soon as they arrive, they will be installed. It was stated that a problem, a part of the problem with the kiosks is that they jam up and need oiling. This is being done on a regular basis, at least once a week, and more if a problem develops. We are still short 67 meters, and a suggestion was made to seek purchasing these. This was noted and will be taken up at a future meeting. It was brought up that we need language for people parking at a broken meter spot to keep them from getting a ticket. Commissioner Provansky, Provansky reported these new meters have three symbols on them. One for an active meter, which is green, with time on it, one for an expired meter, which is red, and one for a broken meter, which is orange. This will help the downtown officer know if the meter is just expired or in trouble. It was also noted that in other cities, you cannot park at a broken meter spot. A motion was made to refer this need for language to the city attorney to be developed and then forwarded on to the Charter and Ordinance Committee for review, and I so move.
Second.
Do we need a motion to refer this to you for review?
No, but we would need a motion to refer that language to Charter and Ordinance, but since it doesn't exist yet, I propose we refer that at a later date once I have the language.
Very good. So we don't need a formal motion approved at this time. The city attorney will come back to us with that language, and we can send it to Charter and Ordinance at that time.
Very good. It was brought forward to try and come up with language for a fine forgiveness program. It was suggested that we look at the language used by the Village of Woodstock. Their plan allows forgiveness for the first two tickets issued to a particular plate number, if the person goes back into the business and has them stamp the ticket with a store logo, I got story there, that should be store logo, or a stamp issued by the city. Treasurer Markowski stated this would create a lot of extra work for her people, and asked to please review this carefully before adopting such a plan. After language is written up for such a policy, and having the city attorney review it, the language should be referred to Charter and Ordinance Committee for review, and I so move.
I think the same, same as before.
There were various other discussions that will be continued at the next Parking Committee. The meeting was adjourned at 6:45.
Thank you. All right.
President Talbot?
Yes, Alderman Heck?
Just a quick question. Chiefs here, who's the beat officer downtown chief?
Officer Lozario.
Lozario's back on. Thank you.
Good. We already covered petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have a retail renewal request for the gas station alternatives. There's a copy of their application and a copy of their city inspection report on pages 87 to 89 of your packet. I would entertain a motion to go into the Board of Cannabis Commissioners.
So moved.
All right. All those in favor of going into the Board of Cannabis Commissioners?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. I would entertain a motion to approve their renewal?
So moved.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Discussion or debate on approval of the renewal. Alderwoman McClure.
I was wondering if there was a representative of the gas station here tonight?
Looks like there is.
Okay.
Dove Sharp, owner of the gas station.
Welcome.
So I would just.
Go ahead.
Open to all questions. I would just like to ask how your first year went?
It's been fantastic. I want to thank everyone in this room, because a lot of people were a part of getting us to this point last year to even open these doors. We've received nothing but love from Rutland, and we hope to just be able to continue to give that back. There were a lot of questions last year about security issues on our corner, and I'm proud to announce that we have had zero issues when it comes to that. I hope a lot more businesses in Rutland continue to treat people with respect first and realize they're gonna get it back, because that's what we found time over time, no matter where they are from, if they're housed or not. We treat them with respect, and we've only gotten that back so far. So that really speaks to this town right here. We're really grateful to be here, and still can't believe it's been a year. Like, holy cow. But yeah, we're really excited to just keep doing what we love, you know? That's, that's what we're doing. Yeah.
Any additional questions? Alderman Wickham?
Just a question. One thing I've been very curious to know was, what's the traffic moving through at these cannabis locations? Do you have a sense of, is this mostly local people who are shopping there? Are you getting a lot of people passing through from quite a distance, right?
So it's a fairly local demographic, at least in our, our store personally. There's only so much that we can legally obtain information on, but we can see how many new customers we've had per day in our reporting. And on average, we have close to 10% of people just passing through, at least for our location. However, you know, being close to the McDonald's, we have a lot of people that are just swinging by for a snack and, you know, realize we're there. So, but a lot more than I expected, to be honest with you. We have a lot of people who just are simply passing through this town on their work trips to other places, coming from New York to New Hampshire, a lot more than I expected. Yeah.
Very good. Any additional questions or discussion? Alderman Gillum?
Yeah, I have one, one question. Under the liquor control, I know we're not in liquor control, but they have a group of people that go in and inspect, and they do a rating, and they do the, and then they post it on the website. Do they do the same for cannabis?
Correct. Yeah. So we have multiple inspections each year. We had one that we had a couple weeks ago, which is from our CCB control officer, who, mine is Mike, for this area. They do them randomized for your renewal too, of course. So we went through that, and we passed that. We also are supposed to have one random inspection at least per year, which we did experience last year. I am not familiar with like an ABC grading system, but I am familiar with it's a pass or fail, and anything that, if you fail, then you have to close, you know?
Right. And you would be notified if that happened too?
Yeah, yeah. So you, at least for my experience, I am notified on-site if there are any issues.
At least I'm answering that question because people are watching, and I guess, well, there's no control over it. And I go, oh, I don't think so. I think there's a lot of control.
There's a lot more control than other industries. But more than anything, I don't think people realize the penalties we face in a cannabis business if we are to fail any of those. We risk our license being removed at any point for any, any failure. And that is very different than a lot of other operations in our state. Yeah.
So my question would be, my question would be, does the clerk receive that information? Do you, do we receive any information that an inspection has been passed or failed, that there's been a fine? So, I mean, does the city itself get that type of information?
What you have in your packet is exactly what I received.
Fines are public knowledge too.
Yeah, and that's, that's, well, I, I, this is different, different debate. We need to approve her, her license, but I think it's a debate we have to have.
Very good. Alderman McCann?
Thanks. Did I see that you had a bit of a celebrity endorsement recently?
Boy, I don't, I don't need to say that. We did have a pop-up with a brand that we've worked with for a long time. That particular celebrity has a brand through that brand because they share a town together, and it was pretty shocking, honestly. I didn't really believe that, you know, we have a lot of pop-ups, like I canceled last minute being down in Rutland area. A lot of our vendors we work with are from other parts of the state. So it was pretty shocking, and yeah, we had a great time. He was super welcoming to the Rutland community. He said that Rutland was the favorite town that he had done a pop-up in yet, actually, when he left. So, yeah. We were very, very happy to have him. I was shocked to have him. Didn't really believe it till I walked through the door. But he was happy to speak with everybody. I will say, one thing that I thought was really cool compared to other stores he had been through, a lot of people just lined up for autographs, and that would, did not happen in Rutland. Everyone wanted to talk and get to know on a more personal level, and I think it surprised him, and also was really refreshing.
Great. Cool. All right. So we have a motion to approve on the floor. It has been seconded. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now moved to go out of the Cannabis Commission.
Second.
Thank you, guys.
All those in favor of going out of the Board of Cannabis Commissioners?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business that board members wish to bring up? Alderwoman Davis?
So I guess in this instance, because it has been to the board before, the city attorney is diligently trying to find out what is local control, because we really don't know what that means, and we are not getting a lot of information, obviously, from the state of Vermont, that these inspections, and what inspections, what are they looking for? You know, is it, I don't know what they're looking for when they're going into these, and I don't know what, even what the fines are, if a fine is, is occurring. So I, I guess it's not really a motion. I guess I'm just looking, I know that the city attorney is working with Sitzel and Page to get some information, and I'm just hopeful that, you know, sooner rather than later, we get some direction, because I think a lot of things are happening in our community that we have no say over, and I'm not really comfortable with some of that kind of information. I'd at least like to know, you know, what, what if any control, what if any guidelines that we can put on these type of businesses, or at least awareness when something's not going right.
Very good. Attorney Le chance?
Um, just to let you know, I did have an update from Sitzel Page. I just got that this afternoon to look through. I am hoping to do a little bit more research and be able to get in contact with the folks up the state to hopefully get a few answers, which I'll then include in a memo and send out to the board once I have that information.
Thank you.
Alderman Heck?
Sharon, as you all know, with the liquor licenses, when they came to the city to ask for, you know, the approval of anyone holding a liquor license, the state saw our opinions were one of our recommendations as far as that goes. When the cannabis thing came into fruition and stuff, they weren't so much asking, they were pretty much telling, you know, this is how it's gonna be. You can have it or not have it. They didn't really care, I think, at the end of the day. But there just wasn't as much guidance from the state or allowing us to have the oversight as we did with liquor licenses. We can make a recommendation to approve or not approve. It's not that you can ban anybody, but at least they, they kind of listened. It just didn't seem like that when, when they were doing the cannabis licensing, at least from what I recognize back, just within the last sc-. from what I recognize back just within the last couple of years when they started that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gillum?
If I may to the city clerk, or city attorney, also, would there be recommendations from, once we get all this information? If there needs to be some adjustments with the legislation to allow us to come in? Like, it'd been really good to know that she passed or failed on her license, and it's good to have that report when they reapply that, oh yeah, I've passed all my, you know, sting operations, like they do with liquor. That's just good information for us, that that's a good operator, and we need to vote for them, you know? Or if they're a bad operator, then we need to take care of that. So I think we need to come up with some information for the legislature, if we need to adjust the law to protect us local.
Any additional unfinished business? Alderman McCann?
Thanks. Follow-up on the report from the Parking Committee meeting. One of the discussions there was about sort of coming up with a cheat sheet for downtown business owners, and I believe the mayor had said he would try to work with DRP to kind of come up with something like that. I know there hasn't been a ton of time since that meeting occurred, and there have been other things that have popped up on the radar, but I was wondering if you could speak to where you think that might go, and how we might be able to provide that information?
Sure. A couple different things. So first, tomorrow, actually, 1 o'clock, a meeting, I'll call it with the parking team internally, I don't want to call it, we call it committee internally too, but to keep the lack of confusion, to kind of craft what City Hall's next steps are. Parking is interesting, you know, if you look at it between the police chief and DPW, and a lot of the administration of parking is internal to the city administration, and the committee has given a lot of guidance over time. So we are going to try to take the next steps and get that, those items back underneath where they need to be, and so we can move forward and clean that up. We've gotten some feedback from the aldermen, so we're going to be having that discussion tomorrow as to kind of what those next steps are. So that's where we're working on that.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Seeing nothing further, we'll move on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Davis?
Thank you. So this topic came up a couple of times election day, and I talked to the treasurer, and I like to refer the issue to finance. And the issue is, what had been brought to me by several voters that day was, how do they know what the impact is of the school and municipal budgets to their tax rate? How do they know what the impact on the not-for-profits is to their tax rate? Because the language on the ballot says above and beyond charter limit. We no longer have a charter limit. That's been gone ever since the voters approved, saying that the Board of Alderman no longer voted only on the budget, it went to the voters. That language, then a charter limit was dissolved. So I'm not, I think, it's just to have the conversation, is there a way to add additional information to a tax bill? Is there a way, and what would be the cost if we put an extra flyer in that came with your tax bill? Or is it more communication? Do we put something up on the website? So I'd just like to refer to the Finance Committee to have that discussion, to see how do we truly, fully inform voters so they can vote yea or nay, because you know it's based on what you can afford and what you can't afford, and, you know, so they can vote yea or nay on these issues, and feel that they are better informed by that impact to their tax rate.
Second. All right, so we have a motion to refer to finance, a discussion of how impact on the tax rate is communicated to voters. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the referral? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Gillum?
Yes, I experienced something in a parking program over the weekend at Walmart's parking lot on Saturday. It looked like they were having a major sale. I could not believe there was no parking at all. You had to go all the way across the island over to Price Shopper, which was great. I thought that was a great thing, everybody. To my surprise, when I came out, I saw all these green shirts coming from Center Street into the parking lot. They took all the parking. So I thought, oh my God, that's not good, because Walmart is a big taxpayer, and they need all that parking for their customers. So I would like to see what we can do down the road, put a policy in the special event permits, that we suggest that they come up with a plan for their event to park somewhere else besides the Walmart parking lot, because those stores down there pay some major taxes. And a lot of people could tell me, oh, it's free. It's not free. Walmart and the rest of those stores down there pay that through their common area expense, their rental and all that. Someone's paying for that, actually, you are, every time you walk in the store and pick something up. That cost is included in that product. So there is no free parking in Rutland downtown. I mean, it costs everything everywhere. So I would like to make sure that we change the policy, and I'd like to put it in the General Committee, that we look at the special event permit, that they need to come up with some plan for their event, where they're going to park their people. I think that would just be good for, also for the business people, knowing that we know there's a place for them to go, and not take up valuable parking for shoppers that we're trying to bring to downtown. Not, I'm not against the event. I mean, the event was great, was a great program, but to see that many people parking in Walmart, plus the people that go to Paramount do the same thing. So we need to change, I guess, the attitude on parking. I'm with the chairman over there with the Parking Committee, we need to change attitude of where people are parking and be more considerate. So I think we need to do that in the special event permit process.
So I believe Alderman Gillum is making a motion to refer adding a parking plan to special event permits to the General Committee? It's been seconded?
Second, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion or debate? Alderman McCann?
I think included in that discussion, we can consider both, you know, encouraging people to use the parking deck or other parking options, but also how do we get fewer cars down there in general, right? So whether that's carpooling, walking, riding bikes, taking transit, all those options.
That could be part of the plan, absolutely.
Any further discussion or debate on the referral? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional? Alderman Barber Gallo?
This is more of a concern than anything else. In the past six weeks or so, as I've been shopping in downtown Rutland, I've come across two stores that have not been charging the city 1% sales tax, and one restaurant that is overcharging. I would like our fellow aldermen, if you would, when you're shopping, please review your sales slips and see whether or not the proper tax is being charged. Those that we are not collecting, we're losing money, which means we've got to raise the tax rate in order to compensate for that loss. Those that are being overcharged, that money somehow should be returned to the people that have been overcharged. Now, with the 1%, this was a food business, I would suggest that that business send a donation to the food bank to make up the difference. In the undercharging, I've spoken with all three of these, with Treasurer Markowski, and I believe her department is dealing with it, but I just feel that we need to be more aware of what's going on when you buy something in this city. Make sure you're being charged the correct amount.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman McClure?
I have some new business to kind of piggyback off Alderman Gillum's suggestion here. I would like to refer to the General Committee under when an individual or an organization is applying for an event permit. I would like to bring to the General Committee requirements for waste disposal. I live in downtown. I love living in downtown. What I don't super love is after an event, when I'm walking to work in the morning, and the garbage is overflowing out of the trash cans, our municipal trash cans we have placed on the street, because these events typically occur over a weekend, and garbage collection comes on Tuesday. It is not fair to the downtown merchants in our historic downtown to have to deal with overflowing trash cans. And this really came to a head this morning. I was on my way downtown for my coffee, and I passed by a trash can on Center Street after this event that was this weekend with a Whole Foods bag sticking out of it. I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with these artisanal fancy grocery stores, but the nearest Whole Foods from here is two and a half hours away. That garbage did not come from downtown Rutland. That more than likely came from someone's vehicle. They more than likely cleaned out their car and stuffed it into a municipal trash bag or trash can that is now overflowing on Monday, when collection does not come until Tuesday. This is a problem that we have faced in the past. There are some organizations that are great about bringing their own trash cans and handling that waste removal, but not everyone. And I would really like to see, we as a board and the General Committee revisit how we can ensure cleanliness in our downtown after these events.
Alderman Tati?
Sorry, before sending that to General, I just, in environmental sustainability currently, is looking at special event permits and how to minimize environmental harm, per John McCann. So instead of sending, like, I think we can combine those maybe, sort of, I mean, trash disposal can fall under that, so as opposed to sending it somewhere else.
I'd adjust that motion to have trash and recycling specifically in regards to events permits go to environmental.
I think what Alderman Tati was saying is, we already have a referral in environmental sustainability that would allow us to address the exact concern that you're talking about without a new referral.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderman McCann?
Thank you, I've got two. So first, a concerned resident of Rutland City reached out to me recently regarding pedestrian safety issues around both the Rutland Northwest Primary and intermediate schools during drop-off and pickup times. It was shared that during the busiest times, drivers endanger pedestrians and each other by spilling onto surrounding streets, blocking traffic lanes, and performing hazardous maneuvers. I move that we refer discussion of this particular issue to the Traffic Committee.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer discussion of pedestrian safety near the Northwest School to Traffic Safety Committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Mayor Dungus?